Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Revere School Committee. Please rise to salute the flag.
...to the light of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call of the members.
Mr. Ferenti.
Here.
Ms. Gravellisi.
Here.
Mrs. Rizzo.
Here.
Mr. Sinella.
Here.
Ms. Ty.
Here.
Mr. Visconti.
Here.
Mayor Arigo.
Here. Before we begin, I'd like to just recognize a former school committee member, Dan McGuire, who's in the audience this evening. Thank you, Dan, for being here. We will move on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have a number of wonderful programs to present to the school committee and the community at large tonight. We're going to begin with a presentation by students and teachers from the Susan B. Anthony School, who, as you know, presented at our student showcase, but are going to give another presentation, you know, a little bit more significant presentation here around an issue that has been really important to everybody in the city of Revere and one that the mayor has been dealing with of late around rodents. And so I'm going to invite first Principal Mrs. Willett to come up and introduce the teachers and the students who are going to share their project. And Mrs. Willett, I'd ask that maybe you mention a thing or two about the MCIEA project that led to this program.
Good evening. Thank you for having us, inviting us here this evening. Tonight I have two of our teachers, Mr. Justin Pezzuto and Mr. Brendan Pezzuto, along with 7th grader Harrison Ruah, who will be talking to you and sharing what they've been working on. It's pretty much been almost not quite a year-long project, but it's been over several months and they're going to, the students will be completing the work in the upcoming weeks. It's a research project that they've been doing. We call them a QPA, a Quality Performance Assessment, and Mr. Jay Pezzuto will be giving you some more in-depth overview of what the work has entailed, but it's through the work that we've done with the MCIEA Consortium, Massachusetts Consortium for Innovation for Educational Assessment, a lot of letters there. But it's work that we've been involved in at the Susan B. Anthony for the last couple of years, but the district for the last three pilot has been working with us. And I'm going to ask Mr. Pezzuto to come on up and give you an overview.
Hi, my name is Justin Pezzuto. I'm a teacher at the Susan B. Anthony Middle School, and we, I was part of the second cohort that Principal Willett invited down to the MCIEA cohort symposium. And we learned about quality performance assessments, and these are different than multiple choice and traditional ways of assessing the students. And we thought they're, they speak to a real-world audience, and we thought it'd be a little bit more engaging for the kids to try to tackle a real-world problem. And we, I was at City Hall for one of the Kalelo Awards ceremonies, and directly after us, we heard Mayor Arigo and the counselors talking about the rat population. And I was thinking, what better way to introduce ecology to our students? We talk about population ecology and ecosystem ecology, other forms of ecology, and thought we could maybe mesh these two things together and give these students kind of a voice in their community. And we thought this was a good way to do that. So I'm going to invite Harrison Ruah up here to talk to you guys a little bit about the project we've done. We're in the research stage now, but we're going to be moving on to the more formal proposal stage in a little while, so come on up, Harrison.
Hi, my name is Harrison Ruah, and I'm a 7th grader at the Susan B. Anthony Middle School. So the project that the Pezzutos have worked on for us is they've given us the task of finding out how rats thrive in their urban environments, and then later we're going to work on proposing different methods to help get rid of all the rats in the environments. So the goal was to use the research bank that Mr. Pezzu, that the Pezzutos made to gather evidence of the, of how rats thrive so well in their environments, and then later put that into a proposal and a solution to the problem. So I think that these QPAs work better than tests because it definitely was a lot more interactive than in a standard multiple-choice fill-in-the-blank tests and essays. And it also helped teach me how to get evidence and then try to find a solution to a real-life problem. And like solving real-life problems isn't something that a test would normally do. And hopefully by the end of this, we'll find a way to eradicate the rat population in Revere. And then...
Any members have any questions? Ms. Ty.
Do you have any ideas yet? Any...
Not really.
Not really? Well, it takes a while sometimes to get that idea, but I hope you succeed. Good luck. Thank you.
Any other members? One thing I'll mention, and I, I've had the opportunity to learn a little bit more about this project, and I am excited about it. I'd love to be able to share whatever information that we have that can help, help you come up with some great solutions. The things that we have done, we've seen some improvements in terms of the requests that we've gotten around rodents or the calls that we get about them. So we'd love to maybe share with you some of the data that we have, because we are collecting some data on how many requests we have and some of the work that we've done, and that may help you with some solutions that you have. So we're more than willing to partner with you for a solution like this. So, great work. Thank you. Dr. Kelly?
Thank you very much. I know there's been a lot of effort put into that project and others like it, so we're really proud of the work that's been happening across the district around quality performance assessments and really helping kids engage with their own education. So thank you all very much. Next, I'd like to introduce Mr. Matt Costa, who is our STEM Director, but is also one of the administrators who oversees our colleague-to-colleague program. And this is a program that the committee members will recall was approved for a two-year pilot, and we're, we're coming to the end of our second year of that pilot. And the participating teachers at the committee's request are here to talk about their experience working with a colleague in a more structured, close-knit way than is typically available to teachers in the public school setting. So I know that they've done some surveys, which I provided to the committee in their packets, and Mr. Costa is going to introduce the teachers who will speak to you tonight, maybe give a little information about the program as well. So, Mr. Costa.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. So, tonight we have four of our participating teachers from our colleague-to-colleague program who are kind enough to join us and present. We also have other participating teachers who are in the audience tonight who are able to answer questions about the program, so...
Can we get a quick wave from all of the teachers who are here to talk? Thank you, to support the program. Thanks.
Thank you. So from the Whalen, we have Ms. Charlene Logue. From the Hill, we have Ms. Melody Holmes. And from the Garfield Middle School, we have Ms. Kristen Martin. And from the high school, we have Ms. Natalie Kalatov-Krimnis. So if they can come up, they can start their presentation.
First, I'd like to say good evening, Mr. Mayor, Dr. Kelly, distinguished members, and to all my friends in the audience. At first, I was a little nervous, but pretty much everybody here, I know. I want to stop by saying that I have had the pleasure of not only participating for one year, I've been able to work with my CT, Jeannie LaRosa, for two years. My first year, I, coming over from the Lincoln School, being a 3rd grade teacher, self-contained, I took the new position. I'm an ELL teacher at the Whalen School now. And coming into the new position, I, there were a lot of changes, the logistics, the schedules, the student population. I went from having a classroom of 26 to I have a big caseload now, and I was able to, you know, work with Jeannie. And she helped me through that scheduling and the grouping, and so I, in the different language proficiencies I have, in one class, I have the different levels of language learners. So each week for the first year, we would meet and we'd do lesson planning, and she'd guide me. She came in and helped, she would help me with modeling lessons and different strategies that we would try, and it was, it was a whole learning process. And by the end of the year, I knew that I wanted to take it a step further, especially with the, with the, with working with Ls. There's a lot of stuff that a lot of teachers don't realize, that in lesson planning, we're not just working with the content, you know, helping the, support the teachers in the different areas, whether it be math, social studies, science. We're also focusing on the language, the language objectives, the reading, the writing, the speaking, the listening. So all of that work, it was so invaluable to have, to have someone with Jeannie's expertise to help me and guide me. I couldn't have, I couldn't have survived last year without her. One of the things we worked on, she came in, she modeled partner reading, which I use with every grade level. I teach kindergarten, 1st, 2nd, 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade, so I'm teaching across all the grade levels, and I use this with every grade level. It's where it's, each child will coach and listen and track, and it's, it's, it's been one of the, one of the best strategies I could have added to my, to my, you know, my This year was a little bit more diving into the curriculum and trying to write curriculum and work with the teachers, yes, but take what I noticed from last year and to support those teachers and support my Ls. Many of them, we take for granted, many of them, they, they have misunderstandings with just the smallest of things. Take for instance, last year, the 2nd graders were working on habitats, they, vocabulary, just having to help them with research, looking up things, using the different materials in books. So I put, we put together just different ways of making all of that content comprehensible. And I also, I think with, I'm a little dry mouth now, I have a bottle of water. But I also worked not only on my teaching, I also worked on my professionalism, I think, with my confidence in the classroom. Thank you. I was able to reach, reach out or branch out more and take on more leadership roles in my school. I've gotten involved with the, I'm a building rep for the Whalen, along with another teacher. And I'm also a teacher supervisor for a student, a Gordon College student, and I, I really use what I, I watch my mentor, my CT, and she, her guidance has helped me be, I think, a good role model and a, and a good teacher to a, to a teacher candidate. So I was able to take on, on that role too this year. I'm working with a group of teachers along with the administration in my school just for, to build up the morale and, and just to make it a really nice place to work. That's something that I'm, I take, I hold close to my heart because I want, we all want to come to school and be, and be, and be happy there. This is, this is one of the projects that I took to the showcase with my, with my 2nd grade students. This is all work that, that ELL students did, all proficiencies, by the way, from newcomers all the way to students who will probably be able to exit the program. This was a brochure at the end, that's what, how we assessed at the end. But it was a whole, a whole research project. It started where we were only looking at three habitats, but within this, this project, I was able to, we were able to create so many different lessons embedded, teaching about, about text features and how to use books. I mean, yes, we have technology and we do, we do use technology, but we, I'm a little bit old-fashioned, I don't know if you can tell. And I like using the books. I like using different, the different magazines and, and that we get, the Scholastic and all of those, those other ways of doing research. So I've, I've had a really good two years. I think that any, every teacher should, new teachers, veteran teachers would benefit. And we were talking, a little side conversation, how we get a lot of professional development. We have, this is an awesome district to work for, but this program, being able to work with somebody closely, another teacher who can come in and observe, and I can also like do that peer observation and have the time to do that on a weekly basis, it's just, it's probably one of the best programs for, for a teacher.
Thank you, Charlene.
Do you have any questions?
Why don't we hear from all of the teachers, and then I'm sure that the committee will have questions for everybody.
Hi, my name is Melody Holmes. I am a 3rd grade teacher at the Hill Elementary School. It is currently my 7th year teaching, and I started working with the C2C program last year. I'm not even sure if I'm officially on the roster this year. I keep crashing my meetings with my C2C because I can't stay away. That's how impactful this work has been. I have found that last year, my team departmentalized for the first time, and I found very quickly that while the academic content was appropriate for the students, the 8-year-olds were really struggling socially and emotionally with not having a homeroom environment, all day long, one consistent teacher. This is where my C2C stepped in and really helped me foster a community that I wanted with my departmentalized team. This kind of work can't be done with the curriculum coach. My curriculum coach is incredible, and what she does is absolutely invaluable, and I am knocking on her door all day, every day. However, her concerns are mostly academic, and she doesn't have the time in the day to worry about my classroom culture. With my C2C, I was able to develop my professional goals. And when we have our evaluation system, we're asked to write a SMART goal for our own professional learning as well as for our student learning. And while the coaches work on our student learning with us, my C2C helped me tailor my professional learning goals to exactly what I needed in the moment. And some days, he showed up perfectly prepared for something, and I was having a meltdown saying, hey, we need to change course, I have this mini-emergency happening in my classroom. And he had the flexibility to help me out with that. And I can't imagine being in the 3rd grade in this position without having the benefit of that work, which I've continued on in the next year, and I've shared with my other colleagues, and now they're working with the C2C as well to grow their own practice because they've seen how beneficial it is to tailor their own professional development in addition to what the district has to offer for all of us. In addition, I've seen how leadership is so important within our peers. My work with Brian really inspired me to pursue my own CAGS in leadership, which I've just completed my first year in the district. And I see from the high-quality work that these mentors are doing in our district that we need peers to be able to trust each other, to have an open-door policy in our classrooms, and to really work together. We have the best resources right here within our district, and sharing them with each other and staying contemporary and being in and out of each other's classrooms is the best way to grow our own practice. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much for having us. My name's Kristen Martin. I am a middle-school beginner ESL teacher, and this is my 2nd year, if you want to go to the next one. So I left my first year, which is as difficult as people say it is, wanting a lot more support and help, and kind of really eager for that. And I heard about the C2C program from two teachers at my school who had participated the year before and really raved about it and had mentioned that it was the single most productive thing that they had done in terms of professional development in their career in Revere Public Schools, and that really sold me on kind of jumping into the program. So my mentor, Tina, and I decided to kind of work on two pieces. The first and primary being classroom management. I was, as a new teacher, obviously, that's something we struggle with, and I really wanted someone in there watching me, supporting me, figuring out how to continue growing in that. Second, the district is implementing the new habits of work, kind of parsing out mastery of content and other important things for academic work in terms of collaboration, respect, how to work on a team, things like that. So we kind of had those two pieces in mind as we, as we started our work together. So in terms of habits of work, we planned a lot of lessons together. These are beginner ELLs, so we not only needed to teach them explicitly the language of habits of work, but also what does it mean to show respect in the classroom, what does it mean to take ownership of your learning? So in this picture, we have goals that our students set for the access test. Students became familiar with the test, had kind of ownership over, okay, I need to increase this much. And so that was an example of some goal-setting work that we did. We also did a lot of lesson planning around self-assessment. A huge part of habits of work is getting kids to really assess themselves, whether they're meeting these habits of work. So for the first one, we see there, for example, students were assessing themselves whether they showed respect in the classroom. The second piece, kids were trying to assess how they worked on a team. These were things that I really leaned on, on my CT, Tina, to kind of help me create. We sat down and planned out lessons together, which I found really, really useful. If you want to go to the next one, thank you. So not only did this have an impact on my kids, I think it also had an impact on my school, my district. Within my school, I was able to share translated materials we had created, and I was better able to really have a common language to assess my students with other teachers. I also participated in a district professional development on grading practices and habits of work, where I was able to collaborate with other ELL teachers and actually share some of the materials Tina and I had made during our time together. So I cannot say enough good things about this program. It has given me a ton of self-confidence as a teacher and also given me that space to really reflect on my own practice that I really don't think I would have done outside of this program. My CT and I are thinking about next year, what we could possibly do. We're thinking bigger picture, how to really sit down and kind of redesign curriculum. I don't have a coach as an ELL teacher, and I do have to get my kids through high-stakes testing, so this has been extremely beneficial. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Natalie Kalatov-Krimnis. I am a history teacher here at the high school. I teach 10th and 11th grade. So I signed up with a big goal in mind, which was to implement a CBL and the theme-based US and world history curriculum that was aligned to school-wide competencies, grade-level standards, engage students, the works.
And just to, for folks at home who might not know, do you want to explain CBL?
Yes, so I'm, I think to some extent, I'll be explaining it as I go, but competency-based system is more, I assess my students, I teach history, but really I assess four standards. I assess reading, I assess writing, and so for reading, I assess like reading for evidence, reading for main idea, reading for point of view. For history, I assess like claim, evidence, reasoning, task, purpose, audience, and speaking and listening skills, habits of work, and then history content. So I use history content to assess the skills that I teach. So, oh, you, go back one. Ready? So, okay, go forward. No, it doesn't work. Okay, there's an animation that was set there. So there is, I had a really big goal. I also was coming back from maternity leave, and so I not only had the competing difficulties of putting these, like this kind of curriculum together, but I knew I needed to do it and maintain some kind of work-life balance. So I wasn't new to CBL. I had taken the training in 2013, 2014. I was in the first cohort of people that took the training. I was, had implemented it to some extent in my small learning group classroom when I was there. And then I took a little break from that when I went to work at the Garfield because there weren't many other people working, you know, in CBL. And I knew that when I came back, it was really important for me to like do that because I'd seen how powerful it was, and I thought it was the right way to go. But I also knew that it's a tremendous amount of work and that to do it well, I needed to talk issues through with somebody, just the same way that like you tell yourself you're going to go to the gym, but if you don't hire a personal trainer or like make a gym buddy, you're not going to the gym. So like I needed someone to keep me accountable to the things I thought were important. So if you can do the next slide. So my vision's kind of bad, so I think I can see most of that, but, so my CT, Marcy, so she helped me first decide which school-wide competencies were the most important to me, which ones I should build my class around, some of the ones I just mentioned, create rubrics aligned to those school-wide competencies that were in student-friendly language, which is really important to me, you know, because I feel like when there's a rubric that doesn't mean anything to a student, it's not really going to get used. And to create and adapt challenging summative material, like assessments and graded in class discussions. And so that's work that we did together. And then as a result of that work, I'm also was PLG facilitator, a co-facilitator for the history department. So things I was able to do is share my process deciding on the standards. So when we met with Kate from Great Schools Partnership and started looking at some of those things, I got to say like, hey, this is actually, like I've done this, don't stress out, this is the process, and shared rubrics with two other colleagues. We used a version of that rubric to like align our world history final and as well as like a number of those summative assessments other colleagues are using. Excellent. So impact on students, I think increased engagement on skill-based assignments. Students can actually explain their areas of strength and/or areas they know they need to work on in terms of like reading, writing, speaking, listening, they know which are strengths for them. And they're using history to make a historical argument about the time they live in today, which is a way more advanced way of interacting with history, and it's a lot closer to the way you work in college. So as an example, that assignment, I had students look at working in the Gilded Age versus working today, and I said, you know, they had seven primary source documents and then things from podcasts, things looking at the gig economy, wage stagnation, wage stagnation, automation, and trying to decide, hey, there are serious issues about working in 2019. Are those issues more challenging or less challenging than the ones workers faced in the Gilded Age? So it was taking those documents to use them to make an argument as opposed to please tell me what happened during the Gilded Age. So she also helped me make a lot more culturally relevant assignments. So right now, this week, my students are working on a assignment, I call it Power of the People, so they are picking any issue that they care about, period. So reproductive rights, Black Lives Matter, gun control, any issue immigrate- So reproductive rights, Black Lives Matter, gun control, any issue immigration that are actually important to them today. I said like, you are a social media director, how are you going to compare or contrast this to protest strategies used by movements before? And that really gets kids thinking about like, what do I care about? What's important to me? How am I going to make this relevant to me today and using social media, but like connecting that with previous movements? And I feel like that's really the assignments that they care about. Like I've had more real, honest conversations this week than I typically have. And as I mentioned a little bit before, so impacts on the history department as a whole. So I think that as a result of this, I was in a great position to help my colleagues adapt new state curriculum frameworks. The history department got, we have not had our curriculum frameworks, the state has not updated them for 15 years, so it's been a while, and they updated them again this year. And we're going through a real sea change because the history department next year will be teaching thematically as opposed to chronologically, which is a huge change. And just being able to say like, okay, I've done this, I know what the process is, I volunteered to work on like curriculum updates for the world history department along with two of my colleagues. And I feel like I've really been able to transfer a lot of those skills and things to the history department as a whole. I think that's it, although I'm happy to talk about how this program's different from other programs or any other questions you have.
So I have a question that I would address to all four of you, but any one of you can choose to answer. Why couldn't you have just done all of this on your own? You're all seasoned teachers with at least a couple of years' experience. Some of you have many more years' experience than that. Why couldn't you have just done this? Why do you need the participating, sorry, the consulting teacher to work with in order to do this kind of work?
So I think two heads are always better than one. I can sit at home worrying about my students and thinking about these lessons all night long, but sometimes talking it over with someone who's a completely neutral party is extremely helpful. You know, the curriculum coaches, when it comes to the academic piece, they're worried about every grade level, every classroom, every student in that school. Their job is tied to their performance and their well-being as well. My colleagues, I can run ideas past them and we're certainly sharing professionals, but they're thinking about, well, that wouldn't work in my classroom, or thinking about how they would change my ideas to suit their needs. When I have a neutral party helping me talk these ideas through, they're really looking at it through the lens of how I can best improve my own personal practice and then go on and share it with others. As well as my C2C brought invaluable tons of resources. He would do so much research on his time in his office and bring the articles to me, which allowed me to free up my time to read the highlights that he would find for me while I could spend my normal prep blocks continuing to do the normal caseload of work that I typically have. So that's how the collaboration was different than I could do with anyone else.
Any other?
I also think that as a teacher, you wind up, you know what resources you have, but you also like, you build relationships with certain people and those are the people you wind up going to and having conversations with. And I think that like talking to someone else and like your, like CT knows not only those resources, but who else in the building is doing interesting work that you might not have like worked with. And so it's also able to like harness that in a really different way. Like I, you know, my rubrics were based off of the rubrics that another teacher like worked on and spent a tremendous amount of time on. And so for me, that's more powerful than me doing it myself because I literally have somebody else who is like, I know I can speak to them, they've made it work. And I can, they can be like, okay, well, these are things I tried that didn't work. So you have the benefit of someone else's experience.
Any other members have questions? Mrs. Gravellisi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It sounds like everybody had a great experience with this program. How often did you meet with your coach? Was it daily, weekly?
I met weekly.
Everyone else just weekly, just to get all the ideas. That's great, thank you.
Any other members?
Mr. Franti.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My only question is, would all of you or any of you continue to use the program next year?
Yes.
Absolutely, yes.
So I wouldn't, only because I feel like I want to help it out to other people and I don't want to take someone else's slot, but if there was like infinite time and infinite resources, heck, yes. Like it's not a matter of I don't think it's helpful, I think something like this would be helpful, you know, like in various stages at various points, but so I feel like no, just for the other people to get the opportunity.
Any other members?
Ms. Ty.
Well, when Mrs. Sunella and I started teaching, we got a piece of chalk and some paper if we were lucky. If you were lucky. So I don't know, I think it makes me so proud to see that you can take advantage of a program like this. Because I remember if I hadn't had a teacher down the hall who took mercy on me and decided to come in and help me, I would have been struggling, you know, and perhaps, and you know, making mistakes over and over again. So it's wonderful. And it's, and I also admired your courage in being willing to put yourself out there and to say, yes, I don't know everything. And, you know, sometimes we think when we come out of college that we do know everything. Then we realize, get in that classroom and boy, you don't know everything. So it's a, it's a wonderful to see you all working together. And I think that's one of the reasons that we continue to be so successful. And I congratulate the superintendents on getting this program for us and getting it moving.
I have to relay that back to the teachers who designed the program through the relb and actually came up with the model and the parameters and designed every aspect of it, so I can't take that, but thank you, Carol.
Mr. Sunella.
Go along with Carol, they mentioned all this, I think that to acknowledge that you do need help. Back in the dark ages, we all thought we were super people and not realizing that there was something other than, back when we went to, well, I went to Salem State, which was a teaching college in those days, and they thought they covered every base, but until you got in the actual classroom, all the textbooks and all, everything else was, okay, now real world. So it's interesting to see that it's reaching those who want to be reached. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sunella. Mr. Visconti.
Well, I commend all of you guys and ladies to participate in the program. I think it's hard to imagine taking a program away that has such an impact to the students, to the teachers here and having you grow each year. So I think it's a valued asset to the teachers. I do have a question. If there was anything that you would like changed in the program, is there anything that you would consider changing? Or add?
So in addition to like if you can't add, even just thinking through for somebody like me, like the idea that teaching is a continuum and you can always improve, right? The idea that we're telling our students you're lifelong learners and things have changed, I can't, I've only been here since 2012 and the number of initiatives that we've gone through that like we're always building and doing something. And so right now, I wouldn't work next year with C2C because I feel like I want to give that opportunity to somebody else. But I do feel like, okay, well, if I had an issue in my classroom, could there be, you know, someone who has like a part position of like, here's a drop-in? Someone whose job it could be, you know, not to work and build a whole relationship, but like troubleshooting, right? And having that be more of an open and like free-flowing kind of like, this person like is great with instruction, they are free to come into your classroom to do different things, to work with you on like a more limited basis on a particular topic or a particular issue without thinking about it like a one or two-year relationship.
So thank you all. I really appreciate you being here. This is a program, although it was designed by the teachers, it's something that's very important to me. As the committee knows, I am a huge advocate of teacher leadership. I believe that all teachers, working together, collaborating and being empowered to help each other and to say, I'm not perfect at this, you are, come and show me. And creating the resources and the environment where it's safe to say things like that and where there are, where there are people who can answer that call is a really critical component of a successful school district. And I think it's one of the reasons that our kids are challenged in their curriculum, as you saw with the Pezzuto brothers and the task they put before their middle school students, which is the same task that we probably have some multi-hundred-thousand-dollar employees at the city and state level tackling the same questions as our recruiters, right? You know, and these are the kinds of things that come out of collaboration and come out of teachers talking together and really thinking about ways to challenge our students. So I'm really proud of all of the teachers that are here before us today and I'm really proud of the successful program that you've created, so thank you. The next item on the superintendent's report is actually a scholarship piece. And I think the committee will recall that over the last several years, one of our staff members, Mark Johnson, who teaches at Seacoast High School, has had a very generous friend who has given scholarships to the seniors at Seacoast when they've met certain criteria. That is the case again this year, which we're very thankful for. And I'd just like to invite Mark up to tell the committee and the folks at home a little bit more about what that scholarship program looks like and what kind of funding we'll be receiving this year.
Thank you very much. I'm Mark Johnson, Seacoast English teacher. Yes, again, this year, an old high school friend of mine has donated $300 for each Seacoast senior who completes a career research project as well as is accepted to a college/university technical school, armed services, has some sort of plan beyond Seacoast, and also graduates from Seacoast. So as was the case last year, he's continued that. This year, we have grown the number, this year, I'm happy to say, up to 12 students who have completed the program and are on track to graduate. So therefore, he is remitting a check for $3,600 to the school. Any questions?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
What does your friend do for a living?
He's an investment banker.
He's a teacher.
Thank you. Do we need to take a roll call?
I think the committee needs to vote on accepting that gift.
Roll call on accepting the gift.
Mr. Franti?
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. Sunella? Ms. Ty?
Much gratitude, yes.
Mr. Visconti? Mayor Arigo?
Yes.
Does the committee want to take up the other gift that was on the consent calendar at this point or wait?
I say we wait.
Okay, okay, all right. The next item on the superintendent's report is some planned schedule changes at Seacoast. And here to present those ideas along with several of his staff members is Principal Steve Magno.
While the presentation's coming up, I want to throw a quick plug for the C2C program. We actually, Marcy Day has been working with members of Seacoast for the past two years with a small staff. Our teachers have really benefited, our students have really benefited as a result, so thank you. Thank you to the school committee for allowing us to present our new and exciting students and learning initiatives at Seacoast for next year. I want to introduce the presentation team. Jennifer Conley is our literacy coach, Caitlin Burfoot, our math coach, Mae Hunter-Smith is one of our math teachers, and Chelsea Branwine-Fryer, one of our ELA teachers. And I want to thank Mr. Fearing, Mr. Johnson, Stacy Lavoti, Mr. McGuire, Mr. DiMarco, and Marcy for being here from Seacoast to support us. The big picture is, why are we doing this work? We've always done it this way and why are we changing? Historically, Seacoast has functioned as a smaller alternative setting to RHS utilizing similar approaches to teaching and learning. During our planning grant last year, research shows that our current student body is no longer being served by traditional structures. And we must provide new opportunities and true alternative pathways to success that are also meaningful, relevant, and rigorous for students. This is a roadmap of the work that we've engaged in. It's not an exhaustive list, but this has been a two-year process that started with the Ba Foundation Planning Grant along with a number of opportunities to understand our students and understand our community and how we can build better programming that are responsive to our student needs. And the goal in all of this is to create a plan for the implementation of school-wide competency-based learning practices for next year and in the future. I'm going to turn this over now to the present, to the presentation team. We have a number of slides that we'll go through and some of your questions may be answered, so we can take questions at the end if that's okay.
Good evening. So you've heard a little bit tonight from the other presentations about CBL already, but I want to define that a little bit more for everybody and everybody at home. So CBL is sometimes referred to competency-based education or proficiency-based learning. CBL is a system of instruction, assessment, grading, and academic performance reporting that's focused on students' mastery of knowledge and skills expected with less emphasis on seat time. So we're looking at their skills and what they can do versus how much they're present. And the expected knowledge and skills students master are based on the state standards and they're cited in competencies and benchmarks. Students must attain before moving to the next level or class. So all competencies that teachers determine must be met before the students can move on. Students are placed into courses according to their current competencies and they can advance at different times and levels depending on how they progress and master skills. This flexibility builds students' ownership and their understanding of their learning goals and focuses on personalizing their learning based on their needs and interests.
So what does it mean to implement CBL at Seacoast? This table highlights a few of the important shifts that will take place at Seacoast as we transition to a CBL model. First, we will be moving from a traditional system in which students are assigned to a grade based on their age, years in school, and when they get to the high school level, the number of credits that they've earned. And we'll be moving to a system where students are placed into courses based on demonstrated skill. Second, we'll be moving from the structure of year-long courses with credit earned at the end of each semester. And we'll be moving to trimester courses that allow more entry points for students. So for example, as you see up on the slide, the scope and sequence for our traditional year-long algebra course is being restructured into three trimester courses, each of which focuses on the Massachusetts state standards that fall under the three umbrellas that you see there. So trimester one is data and operations, trimester two is linear models, and trimester three is quadratic and exponential models. Not only does this allow more entry points and potentially rolling graduation for the students that are currently enrolled at Seacoast, it will also offset the start of our trimester from the end of the quarters and semesters at the high school. And this will allow for a smoother transition for students that are transferring to Seacoast because it will provide adequate time for those new students to learn about the CBL model, take diagnostics, and then ultimately be enrolled in a program of studies that aligns with their needs and demonstrated skill level. Lastly, we'll be moving from a system in which students are assigned grades, A, B, C, D, F, like traditional system, based on cumulative averages. And we'll be moving to a structure where students progress from course to course based on demonstrated levels of competence. of competence, exemplary, highly competent, competent, and not yet. And this last shift aligns directly with the work that the district's been doing with separating students' habits of work grade from their academic mastery.
So, we have four multi-year goals, which you can see here, and so, we're just going to go through those and talk a little bit about what that's going to mean for the coming year for each goal. So, the first goal is in the next slide. We are going to be reinventing coursework to be rigorous, competency-based, and student-centered. So, Caitlin talked about this a little bit. That's the work that we are doing to take the courses that we have now and turn them into trimester courses. So, in math and humanities, we've done that, started doing that work at the end of this year, so we're ready to start that at the beginning of next year, so that's our focus there. So, we've taken those courses and broken them down from that whole year-long cycle into the competencies that would need to be for first trimester, second trimester, third trimester, and tried to theme them so they make coherent courses. The idea there is that students master a particular trimester, for example, in algebra, so that they're not moving on to the next part of algebra before they understand the first part. So, a lot of times now, what we see is that students will fail the first semester of algebra, but they still go on to the second semester of algebra, and that doesn't really set them up for success. So, our idea is that they have to demonstrate that competency before they can move on. So, we're going to be providing opportunities for support for that, obviously. Within a trimester, students have opportunities for retakes and reassessments, but if we get to the end of a trimester and a student still has certain skills or competencies that they haven't mastered, we have the option of placing them into a flexible seminar course during the day where they can get extra support on those things that they haven't yet gotten to, so that they're able to progress while still getting that support for the stuff that they haven't mastered yet. Goal two is kind of with that flexible use of time to maximize student engagement and learning. So, the trimester schedule is one of our ways of trying to use our time more creatively, to be flexible, to give those multiple entry points, to make sure we're placing students where they need to be, when they need to be there. In addition, that allows us to bring in the support that they need at different points in the trimester, to say, "Hey, we've assessed the first trimester. Here's where you are. Here's where you need the extra support," to bring that in. Also, it allows students to see their progress more frequently, so that after they've completed a trimester, they can say, "Hey, I've earned credit now," and that they can see that progress, which keeps them re-engaged in school, as opposed to having to wait until January to be like, "Yay, I made it," which oftentimes leaves them hanging a little bit where they give up before they get there. And this just gives them a chance to get to those points more quickly. As we go through this next coming year, we're going to be kind of studying the scheduling and how that works. It may end up shifting the way we run our classes, maybe pushing them a little longer as we go into the following school year. So, we're going to be looking at that as in our current year.
So, goal number three is about using social and emotional learning and restorative practices to best support student-centered learning. And next year, as a school, we are planning on continuing our work to follow the district-led initiative of embedding social and emotional learning and restorative practices throughout all areas of the curriculum. So, instead of having SEL being something separate from all the academic courses, we're planning on actually making sure that it's consistent throughout all classes, all academic areas, because this is something that our students really need to focus on and reflect on, not only throughout the school year, but also further beyond after they graduate and even in the summers between their classes. We also plan on developing and implementing effective, restorative, and accountable approaches to discipline, and we're really trying to focus on this shift from punishment to learning. So, we've highlighted two specific policies that have been a focus of our work these past few years, so our attendance policy and our cellphone policy. And again, we're really trying to focus on this shift from seat time being something that's a punishment, but really making sure our students understand and we communicate to them the importance of being in school and being there to understand the material that they need to, so they can move on and actually show mastery for what they've learned. Our fourth goal is about designing adult professional learning and collaboration time to implement our school-wide goals. So, right now, we've actually had multiple staff members that are also involved in the MCIA Cohort Three that the Pezzuto brothers were also talking about before. So, we have, I believe, four staff members that have been involved in Cohort Three, and all of us are from different discipline areas. So, we've been able to bring back the work that we've done in the cohort to our professional learning groups, and then implement those throughout the school. So, this will be more consistent, and having that professional development that we've been involved in, we will continue with one another. We're also, we've been involved, multiple staff members have been involved with the grading practices committee for the past three years, and we are really focusing on separating the habits of work from the academic grades, so we can really see evidence of what have our students learned. Why are we focusing on their behaviors in the class and sort of punishing them in their academic grades when these should be two separate parts of their grades, so our students understand, "Okay, how can I reflect on my behavior in the class?" But I'm also able to show my teachers the mastery of the content that I've learned this year, and able to have those be separate, so they're not punished in that way that we've seen before. And we're also working on restorative practices. We have multiple staff members that are involved in restorative justice and circles that we've been bringing back to our staff as a whole, that we'll be implementing in our classes next year. And no questions?
Any members have any questions? Ms. Ty?
I do about the cellphone policy. Are you now going to integrate the use of the cellphone in your classes? Are you going to encourage it in one way and discourage it in another, or either or both? What will be your goal in that matter?
Yeah, so, you'll jump in. So, right now, we've noticed a lot of our students are really struggling with a lot of the content because they're so addicted to their phones. A lot of us have tried different initiatives, like tech breaks and saying, you know, "We'll do this for a certain amount of time, then maybe a two-minute tech break, and then we'll go back to that learning." We've tried, you know, a lot of different things in the classroom, and we're going to be focusing on a lot of different possibilities for next year, but as of right now, we want to be able to teach them the appropriate way of using technology, because as of right now, it's not, it's a really big challenge as a classroom teacher for me. So, I don't think that there's a perfect answer for what to do with cellphones, but it's definitely something that, we know our current policies aren't setting up our kids for success, so we're going to be exploring a lot of different ways that we can help them.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chelsea. And I think, like, looking back at the slide, it's moving from, like, policies that punish students to policies that help students learn how to manage devices, how to demonstrate self-awareness. We want students engaged and engaged in learning. One of the things that we've seen with cellphones and the increased cellphone use, and we're not using cellphones at this point, or students aren't using cellphones for student work. We have plenty of technology devices, Chromebooks, iPads, et cetera, that we can use in classrooms. We almost have enough Chromebooks for students at Seacoast. It's the social media apps that are, what we're seeing is disengagement, but also students using it as a crutch for their own social and emotional development. You know, if I don't want to engage, I can tune out, but even abilities to have conversations with each other, solve problems, those are the areas that we want to look at and put in the learning back in social, emotional, how we're teaching students to be more self-aware, be more academically efficient, and be able to manage these devices in the future. We didn't grow up with them, so it's easier for us to manage them, but we're looking at a number of possibilities for helping our students be able to manage and learn.
Thank you.
Any other members?
Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Sinella?
On the aspect of changing everything, how does this coincide with the high school for their graduation and for their promotion? And, I mean, that's going to take a husk of another color. I mean, that's really going to be, I mean, it's innovative. It sounds superb, especially with the element in the student body that you have. You're tailoring it for them, but you still have Big Brother watching.
Sorry, if I understand your question correctly, you're asking how our changes, like, mesh with the high school, basically. Okay.
Basically, yes.
Yeah, okay. What I would say is that in terms of content and standards, we're not changing what our content and standards are. We're just reorganizing them in a way to better support students, so that as students are progressing through high school, they're still supposed to be acquiring the same skills. What we're doing is we're reorganizing it so that we're better able to support them in actually getting those skills, so that when I get a student in an upper-level math course, I can be certain that they actually know the math that they're supposed to know at that point, when they reach that point, so that we're not always going back and being like, "Let's reteach you algebra before we get started." And so, really, I think it meshes very well. We've offset on the trimester, partially to accommodate with the high school. What happens right now is that we often get transfer students in the middle of a quarter, which is very disruptive to the students, because they come in three weeks into learning, and they haven't gotten that part of the class, but they're still expected to, like, somehow go back and learn it so that they can pass the quarter. Where if we do this trimester thing, the, all right, the Revere High School quarter would end, we'd have some chance to assess who's going to be coming to us, figure out where they're need to be placed, what they need to do, what courses they should be in, before they would come at the beginning of one of our trimesters. So, they wouldn't be losing instruction in that sense.
So, again, in three years?
Yes. We haven't done it yet.
I mean, it'd be applauded, because someone did it earlier with, like, higher learners, without taking into effect as to what tools are used to do it. So, at least, this is more than innovative.
That's all right. Thank you.
Can I comment on one thing? So, one thing that you mentioned, Mrs. Sinella, was about graduation, and I did get to talk to Steve and some of his leadership team about how, what that might look like, because the long-term idea here is kids are going to move a little bit more at their own pace, right? So, theoretically, there could be a student who maybe excels academically, but for whatever reason, the high school wasn't necessarily a good fit, so they find themselves at Seacoast, maybe overage and undercredited. They might have tried algebra once or twice before and not passed because of attendance, for example. Now, with the competency-based grading, that same student might demonstrate that they're finished with all of their competencies and completed all of the coursework that they needed to complete in the end of a trimester. So, the idea would be that that student, let's say they were ready to graduate at the end of a first trimester, could finish up with their coursework. Hopefully, we would be helping them get a job, or move somewhere into an internship, or pre-college program, and they would hang on and still walk the stage with their peers the following June, but we could engage them in these other life experiences that might change what their day-to-day activity looks like and put them on more of a track towards success because of the way we're able to engage them in other things.
Whatever. But I think the other question is, have you worked it out with the high school, high, you know, the leadership at the high school? I mean, are they on board with the possibilities of what's going to take place?
So, yes.
Right on cue.
Like Dr. Kelly said, you know, it's not uncommon for students who come to us after two years of being unsuccessful at the high school with traditional structures. So, when they come to us, it's how do we, how do we take advantage of the school committee's foresight of already voting early graduation, where we are going to be assessing students? So, rather than completing a whole 'nother year of geometry or algebra, if we can assess students and give them diagnostics, we may be able to, I mean, if you were here at the high school in a class for two years, in 80 minutes of math every day for two full years, you probably have remembered something about math. So, why are we starting back at the beginning of algebra, at the beginning of geometry? We want to look at applying some, you know, some really well-built assessments where kids can test in and test out if they've already demonstrated competence. And looking at policies that our kids have struggled with, you know, we have had students that, you know, may have had 70s, 80s in a classroom, they missed too many days of school and failed, but have demonstrated competence. We want to be able to offset that by not punishing students, but by using what they know and what they already know to demonstrate that they can do the work and move them forward. So, it really is going to, it really is a nice complement to the traditional structures of the high school, and us offering something different, so students who were not successful here, they have a different opportunity and a true alternative path to graduation.
Thank you.
This is Rizzo.
I've always been a fan of CBL, and I can't think of a group of students that could use it as much as the students at Seacoast, and I really do see it as a huge advantage for them. So, I commend you with this whole change and this whole approach, and I can't see, I can't wait to see all the students succeed more so than they have this year and next year. So, thank you all for thinking and thinking outside the box, and I know your students will appreciate it. Thanks.
Great. Any other members? Dr. Kelly? We'll take a two-minute recess. We are now back from our two-minute recess, and we continue with the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, the final item on the superintendent's report is really just an update for the committee and for parents at home. We made one slight change to the school year 1920 calendar, which the committee had voted last month, and it was really just a change in date on the half-day for professional development that we had planned in October, and I wanted to just mention that so that people will pay attention to that change. The updated calendar is on our website, and copies are available in the superintendent's office, but that half-day, instead of happening on October 9th as originally planned, is now moved to October 23rd. So, just a minor change, and that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. We will move on to the student representative report. Waleed?
Thank you. I want to start off saying the language honor society ceremony will be held on Thursday, May 23rd, at 4:00 p.m. in the RHS auditorium. That's for Spanish Honor Society, French Honor Society.
It was moved to 5:00.
To 5:00? Okay, so, 5:00 p.m. Okay, so, five p.m. in the RHS auditorium, and it, it, it's just a ceremony where all the students that have been taking these classes and these language courses are able to get recognition for their hard work. Second is the senior scholarship awards will be held on May twenty-eighth at three-thirty, also in the RHS auditorium. The annual sports awards will also be held May twenty-ninth at Showcase Cinemas at six p.m., and the National Honor Society Ceremony will be held May thirtieth at four p.m. The seniors' last day of school is May thirty, May thirty-first, and senior prom will be held that afternoon at six p.m. at the Logan Hilton. And finally, grad, senior graduation will be held at Harriet Delarussos Stadium at six p.m. on June fifth.
Will you be here?
Yeah.
Any members? Any questions? No? Okay. Thank you, Waleed.
Thank you.
We will move on now to the public hearing on school choice, and in the, in accordance with the provisions of Section sixty-one of Chapter seventy-one of the Massachusetts General Laws, we will have a public hearing for the purpose of discussing and voting the enrollment of non-resident students, also known as school choice, in the Revere Public Schools. The, I will now open up the floor to any proponents. Seeing none, we'll close that side of the hearing and open it up to opponents.
Mr. Mayor.
Dr. Kelly.
I would, I would urge the committee to not allow school choice to happen in the Revere Public Schools. As you are all well aware, our schools are significantly overcrowded, and our class size exceeds what we would hope for it to be in an ideal situation. So I would like to speak against the school choice provision and urge this committee to vote against allowing school choice in the Revere Public Schools.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. Any other, any other opponents? Seeing none, we'll close that side of the hearing, and we will now take a roll call. Mr. Visconti.
A motion that we, the school committee, should vote no on accepting non-residents to come into our school system and not participate in school choice.
Dr. Kelly?
Second?
So there's a motion with a second. I'm going to give the floor to Dr. Kelly for clarification.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just because the language becomes a little bit tricky, I want to clarify for the folks at home. Mr. Visconti has made the motion that we not allow school choice in the Revere Public Schools, and therefore, for the committee members, a yes vote would support not having students from other districts come to school in Revere.
Thank you for the clarification, Dr. Kelly. Roll call on the motion.
Mr. Feranti?
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. Snello?
Yes.
Ms. Thai?
Yes.
Mr. Visconti?
Yes.
Mayor Arigo?
Yes. We'll now open up the meeting for public participation. Seeing none, we'll move on. The consent calendar. Are there any items up? Mrs. Gravellisi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one item that I would like to take off the consent calendar. I'd like to recognize that Row, Row, Row to Revere Committee has donated two sensory walk packages to the Wayland School. Row, Row, Row is very generous to our special education, and that was a great gift that they gave us.
Excellent. Any other members? We'll, we'll take a roll call, but any, would any other members like to speak on? Miss, Mrs. Rizzo?
We did the motion.
We didn't finish the consent calendar. She just took it off the table, so I thought we were going to vote on the consent calendar first, and then that would be separate.
So we'll vote, we'll take a roll call on the consent calendar without the, the Row, Row, Row donation.
Mr. Feranti?
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. Snello?
Yes.
Ms. Thai?
Yes.
Mr. Visconti?
Yes.
Mayor Arigo?
Yes. Now, on the Row, Row, Row donation, would any other members like to say anything? Ms. Thai?
Thank you.
Okay. Roll call on the donation from Row, Row, Row.
Mr. Feranti?
Yes.
Mr. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. Snello?
Yes.
Ms. Thai?
Yes.
Mr. Visconti?
Yes.
Mayor Arigo?
Yes. Report of the subcommittees.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Feranti.
Yeah, the Ways and Means Subcommittee had a couple of meetings on the budget. The chairmans, myself, and the members are Carol Thai and Jerry Visconti on the committee. There are a couple of things that are a little different this year that I'd like to just notify, just make people aware of, that the net school spending in chapter, I mean, Schedule Nineteen is based on the House budget, which we don't believe yet until July. We did increase the long-term sub-money, and a budget of this size takes a lot of effort from a lot of different people. And I want to thank Matt Cruz, the CFO, Superintendent Dr. Diane Kelly, Mayor Arigo and his administration, plus the rest of the members of the school committee, being Susan Gravellisi, Stacy Riz, and Fred Snello, for all their participation. The total budget for this year will be eighty-nine million, nine-hundred-and-forty-seven-thousand, four-hundred-and-forty-four dollars. That's what we'll be voting on, on the meeting on June twelfth. The purpose of this is to get a vote to have, the recommendation is that the Subcommittee makes a motion to the school committee to accept this number for the budget. I'm going to make a motion that we accept it, and I need a second.
Second. Roll call.
No, we're just voting it so, so the superintendent can advertise it.
Can advertise.
Because we have to advertise it two weeks before we vote on it. I make a recommendation, yeah, to advertise it.
Roll call?
So I, I do think that the, the Ways and Means Subcommittee did vote at their last meeting to make the recommendation to the committee that they accept the latest version of the budget.
Well, I think we do because if we don't have a roll call, then we can't put it out publicly, you know, we can't advertise it. So that's the purpose of this vote, is just to advertise it. Just then, then we'll vote the official budget in two weeks.
Roll call.
Mr. Feranti?
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo?[1213.14]